Good evening, members and members of the public. And welcome, Mr Hyman, councillor Hyman, rather. Can I start by asking that we confirm the minutes of the meeting that was held on the 12th of July? And they've been laid on the table for half an hour. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. I'll sign those after this meeting. Any apologies for absence, Mrs McQuillan?
None received, leader.
Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest?
None received in advance.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the public?
None received.
Thank you. We move to item five, which is the forward programme, colleagues, which you will find on pages seven to 12 of your agenda. Executive, are you content with this? Are there any items on this you wish to raise or speak to? No? I'll take it as noted on the agenda. Thank you. We move to item six, which is the Budget Management Report, on pages thirteen to twenty. I am advised we have one speaker on that. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, council leader. For lack of time, I'll concentrate solely on the Brightwells judicial review funding element of the item, if I may, leader. I'm being very careful to steer well clear of any exempt matters, as you would advise me, I'm sure. However, I accept that in responding, you may consider it necessary to go into exempt session, and I understand that, if necessary. Many of the residents we serve, leader, are extremely concerned about this issue and the recommendations before you. I've been asked to attend in order to obtain clarification and assurances, if that's possible. I think most residents' main concern is that we will lose the court case. And when I say 'we', I mean the council, because I have no part in the legal action myself, as you know. Of course, I do know the claimants quite well, as do you, leader, but that's by the by. The issues are wide and complicated, and I certainly can't do them justice in the four minutes I'm allowed here. But put simply, this could cost council taxpayers a mint, and the residents who we serve are paying for both sides. It's a very important issue. The first issue is it's unclear quite how much this might cost. It's unclear what the recommendations here are asking for. It's unclear to me, it might be clear to you, and I'd like some clarification. We don't know what this might be the beginning of. Paragraph nine on page fifteen states that the £250,000 is an initial sum, it states that in the text. So there's obvious concern amongst residents that the amount might double to half a million or more. Of course, that's difficult to predict, but members should be warned and must be given some idea of what's coming. We also need to know whether the £250k makes provision for the possible award of damages, and the recent comments of Justice Geraldine Andrews, of course, in giving leave for JR. If not, and if we assume the claimants spend a similar sum to the council, then we might be looking at a total of a million pounds in legal fees for both sides, looking at what the documents say, and I would like clarification on that. We also need to know whether or not the £250k includes Crest's legal costs, and further to that, whether or not we have a cast-iron guarantee that Crest will pay their share if we lose the case, or whether we might in fact have to take them to court to get the money out of them. Now, of course, if we lose, Crest won't be contributing the £800,000 towards the Memorial Hall work, so the council might be expecting taxpayers to foot that bill too. So is the bill that we're looking at for tonight's decision the beginning of a £2 million bill, is what the residents might rightly be asking. The papers are unclear, please clarify those if you would. Residents believe that before you agree to any funding for judicial review, members need to know your best estimates of the maximum this might cost the taxpayer, in other words, the worst-case scenario. There is another vital matter, which I'd like to raise personally, which I learned by experience when I was dealing with Thames Down Council in Swindon in the 1980s. And it was Swindon's policy, in a case I was involved in, to only defend a judicial review if they had a robust heavyweight legal opinion stating that they had a better-than-even, better-than-50/50, I suppose, chance of winning. I gather most councils have a similar policy. I don't know whether Waverley shares that approach. If not, why not? But if so, whether we actually have such an opinion, it's very important. As the May documents that are obviously publicly available make it clear that at that time we didn't have such an opinion available. I think that's a vital question. You might wish to go into exempt to answer that one, I expect, leader. Residents also question whether the commencement of building at the Memorial Hall is premature and will prejudice Waverley's case. Another vital question is are Waverley's legal team and council aware that the design of the scheme is still unfinished? Are there at least three more planning applications awaited? Are they aware of the considerable risks in both practicality and environmental law? We need these matters to go to ONS before members make a decision. So finally, leader, JR is a last resort. We know that the courts expect everything to be done in advance. Can I just wind up? I've got a couple more lines, if that's okay? We know your ONS backbenchers won't call in this decision unless you allow them to, so can we ask that you agree to schedule a corporator joint ONS in advance of 27th of September exec, to ensure that as an executive you're telling residents and the courts that you genuinely believe your position is tenable and does withstand scrutiny? Thank you, leader.
Right. Thank you, councillor Hyman. We will need to go into exempt, I think, for some of this, but let me take some of the matters you've raised. First of all, and I want to make this absolutely crystal clear, given a lot of the scaremongering and concern there has been in and around Farnham with regards to the work on the Memorial Hall. The Memorial Hall has started, it was not premature, and that work will continue. That work has been done in consultation and continues to be, with a number of stakeholders, including the Gostrey Centre trustees. And it is absolutely imperative that we get on and we build a Gostrey Centre and have a Memorial Hall that is fit for purpose for the future. And that will happen, that is happening, and so let's be absolutely clear, because there's been a lot of misinformation about that, and that needs to be made crystal clear now. We've said already that we would get on with the Memorial Hall. When we took that council decision back in July for the additional funding, we made very clear that we would move ahead with that, and that's exactly what we are doing. So no, that is not premature. You've asked a number of legal questions, and I think I'll also defer to Mr Bainbridge, the borough solicitor, who can help give you some more definitive responses to those, and hopefully without us having to go into exempt. But I think what we need to be really clear on here is the item that is before you on the agenda tonight is to agree a supplementary estimate of approximately £20,000, and a further supplementary of £230,000 for external legal costs. I have said, and a number of my colleagues have said all the way along, and we said this very clearly, again, back at the meeting in May, that nobody wins in a judicial review. With all due respect, and we have a lawyer sitting in with us this evening, it'll be the lawyers who get rich. This is in nobody's interests, but a group in Farnham have chosen to bring a judicial review against the council. The fact that we have at stake jobs, jobs ongoing once it's built, new homes, a vastly improved social and leisure aspect for the town, and we have a scheme with an implemented planning consent, we have a funder in place, and a number of 278 and 106 benefits, and a number of other community benefits, the fact that a group wants to stop that, and we have significant ongoing revenue at stake, let's be very clear, we made it public, and you will have seen, councillor Hyman, that we were talking £800,000, £900,000 a year as an income stream. This council needs that income stream, not just for residents in Farnham, but across the whole borough. The fact that unfortunately a group of people in Farnham have chosen to again challenge that as well, I think is a very sad day, because, as I say, nobody ultimately will win from this. But we need those benefits, we need this regeneration scheme. A large majority of people in Farnham want to see this regeneration scheme go ahead, and we need, as I've said before, the income stream. And so for those reasons alone, and there are a number of reasons, yes, we will go ahead. We are putting in this request for the money towards legal costs, and that is, at the moment, how it is. Now, I will move to Mr Bainbridge. I don't know if you'd like to pick up on any of the items, or if it would be appropriate if you feel it would be better if we took it into exempt at this stage. Mr Bainbridge, thank you.
No, I don't think there's any need to move into exempt unless anyone wants to discuss the content of advice, legal advice, as we did back in May. I think there's five points I can pick up from that. There was mention of damages, and there's no claim for damages here. I think there may be, there's a cost risk for the council if it were to lose this claim, but there's no damages award that would be payable here. This is simply a review of the council's decision, like any other judicial review that we've had. The decision would be overturned if we were to be unsuccessful in defending this claim. Crest are a party to the claim, so they'll bear their own costs. As to any share of the council's costs, that was dealt within the May papers. You know, we're continuing to discuss costs with Crest Nicholson, but they are now an interested party in the claim and are taking an active role in defending it, which is good. Do we have a policy of defending, not defending claims, if you've got less than 50% prospect of success? No, we don't. I can't think of another authority that does. Certainly, my previous authority did not. Most lawyers will tell you that it is not advisable to stick hard and fast percentage prospects to a consideration of whether you should proceed, you know, to defend something or bring a claim. You'll invariably be wrong when you try to attach a percentage weight to prospect of success. So no, we don't have a policy like that. Does the fact that Memorial Hall is prejudiced, sorry, does Memorial Hall prejudice the legal case in any way? Well, no, it doesn't, for the reasons you've just explained. It's going ahead in any event. Is the legal team aware that the planning, that certain planning matters are outstanding? Yes, I mean, myself, obviously, and our legal team is fully aware of the, you know, what still needs to be done in terms of planning, and obviously with the development agreement and the leasehold side of things. So I think that answers various points without having to go into exempt.
Just to wrap up, councillor Hyman, you asked about an additional overview and scrutiny meeting. This matter will come before full council and will be, I'm sure, robustly debated by full council in October. So no, there will not be an additional overview and scrutiny committee to make a decision on this, given that it will come before full council. So I trust that helps to answer the questions that you raised this evening on that matter. Moving on.
May I come back on that?
I'm afraid not.
Thank you, leader.
Moving on. Councillor Hall?
Thank you, leader. Okay, there are six items of business in the financial section. The first one is the quarter of a million for the judicial review that's just been discussed. This is to make sure it's properly financed. Item two is £7,500 for a CCTV camera on Way Hill. This is to prevent fly tipping. The third is two amounts, one for £10,000 and one for £15,000. The 10 is for litigation, the second is for antisocial behaviour. Item four is a, well, it's a policy that we had in place that was going to save us £26,000 in 2016, 2017. Under review, we've decided not to implement it, so the effect is roughly the opposite, so £26,000. And item five is to ring-fence £40,000 for the Meals on Wheels, specifically to pay for kitchen equipment in the day centres. Item six is the Housing Revenue Account Business Plan Principles, set down in paragraph 27 in the attached notes.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Councillor Dinas, you wanted to speak?
Yes, sir, thank you. If I can just turn to point two, the allocation of £7,500. I think probably for the first time, I'm actually going to disagree and ask for more. We are an enforcement agency on some of the low-level antisocial behaviour, fly tipping issues, and I think one camera to cover a borough, geographically the size that we are, I think is inadequate, because once a camera is deployed, you know, it's going to be several weeks at least before you can look at any emerging issues. So my request is actually we go for two cameras to give us the flexibility to enforce when it's necessary. So my apologies for raising that, but I think we need two cameras for an additional £7,500. Thank you.
Yeah, come back on that. I mean, what I can do is I can discuss it with the chairman of finance and come back to you on that. I mean, I'm generally in agreement that more is better than less, and if it means that we can cover a larger area and reduce fly tipping and other antisocial behaviour, then it seems like a good spend, but I can look into that and come back.
I think it is a great shame that fly tipping is on the increase, unfortunately, and it does appear to be starting to cost us a lot of money. Obviously, if we're to look at prosecuting and actually taking action against offenders, we need to ensure that we have very robust evidence, and CCTV would be one of those ways. So we'll make a note of that. Sorry.
Leader, I think if you could ask the director of finance whether there is sufficient money in the emergency schemes budget to pay for an extra camera?
Leader, there is. I mean, like I said, there's not a huge amount of detail in paragraph 14, and this at the moment is a single-site issue, and it's a bit of a test case as well, because I know that Richard Homewood wanted to try this approach, review it and see if it works, but I completely hear councillor Dinas's point. And, I mean, we could move forward on this basis, and then throughout the budget process, develop a bid to spread it wider, or clearly members can deal with that now. There is enough in the unallocated emergency schemes budget to do it now. I think the reason why it was one site, one camera, is to see whether, you know, the approach and the technology is sufficient for us to be able to secure some prosecutions, and then we learn and build on the project after that. But, you know, clearly there is sufficient money if members want to press ahead sooner than that.
I think from what councillor Dinas is saying, and, sorry, councillor Adams, I know you want to speak to this as well, but what I'm minded to do is actually put in an additional recommendation that, again, with the agreement of the finance director and finance portfolio holder, some of the monies from the, you know, the emergency budget are used. Is that something the executive members would be content to support?
Yeah, agreed.
Right. In that case, councillor Dinas, you will need a proposer and a seconder. Okay, so in that case, I'm happy to support that as well. Are we all content to support that, executive?
Agreed.
Would you like some wording for that, or?
We can amend the existing recommendation. I think that's clear enough, that it would be delegated to the director of finance in consultation with the portfolio holder.
Okay.
We've agreed that that would be the amendment, now we just need to make sure that the actual recommendations are agreed as well.
Councillor Adams, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I mean, we have a number of boats in the west of Wayville. Councillor Dinas's issue is in the east, and we know how difficult it is to get from one side to the other. But we have a number of boats where actually we've put up, CCTV operates in this area, and of course it doesn't, so people have been getting wise to that. So an additional camera which covered some of the boats in the western area of Waverley would be really useful. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very happy to support all the recommendations before us, but I think in particular the supplementary estimates for the judicial review of the Brightwells regeneration scheme. We've already heard much on this subject this evening, but I feel I should share my own thoughts. At the end of the day, what we have is a significant amount of ongoing revenue, not to mention the many jobs of this scheme. And those are at stake, and it is absolutely essential that we defend our position. It is a shame that a number of our residents do not believe that the benefits of this scheme are so great, and I bring forward this judicial review. But I do believe in the scheme, and I am very keen to ensure that we defend our position as far as possible. So naturally, I support this recommendation, because I think it really is so important. We hear year after year of the difficulties of our finances and the withdrawal of government funding by way of grants, and ultimately, we need to find a way to plug those holes. And this is one such investment project that we should jump at. I'm also obviously happy to support the amended proposal for the additional camera within the borough, and I think that's a terrific move forward.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else want to speak? Councillor King?
I thought you weren't speaking to me tonight. Thank you, leader. I want to comment on the CCTV camera, please, in Way Hill. This is in my ward. This has been an ongoing problem for many years, and I'm sick and tired of going out to the site over weekends, taking photographs of rubbish piled high, and being promised over a long period of time that we will do something about it, and we have never, ever enforced it. I would hope that we now will. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hall, will you wish to come back?
Sorry, leader, just one very quick point. On point six, referring back to the notes, 27, item three, it should have two words on the end, 'with finance'. So it should read, 'sound financial business cases agreed with finance'. I pointed it out, it didn't get added.
Can I ask that those two words are added to the report so that it's absolutely clear to members? Thank you. Sorry, councillor King, did you wish to come back?
Sorry, we were arguing. I actually thought it should say, 'business cases agreed with the director of finance and the portfolio holder for finance'.
Yep. What's the wording? Agreed? Has anyone, anything else they wish to add to budget management? No? In that case, there are six, seven recommendations, because we've got the additional recommendation on delegated powers to the director and portfolio holder for finance for the additional camera. Are you, are we all agreed on that?
Agreed.
Right. Our next item is the approval to submit a planning application, which is at Site A on Oxford Ridge, pages 21 to 26. Councillor King, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you very much indeed, leader. I just wonder if I might take the liberty, before I introduce the report, of letting you know that Waverley Housing and New Housing has just been awarded, an award, by the Godalming Civic Trust for our station road new houses. So I think that's one to commend offices for, which is splendid, they're lovely properties. The report to submit planning application for Site A at Oxford Ridge is another good news story, as far as we're concerned. Colleagues will remember that way back in August 2014, a hybrid planning permission was agreed for the development of the various areas at Oxford Ridge. This report is merely coming forward now for the formal planning permission process to begin for Site A. Obviously, it's an early stage in the process, but it's the first step in the process of building decent homes for our tenants up at Oxford Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, and really encouraging to see Oxford Ridge really starting to come forward now. It's been a very big part of the long-term strategy in terms of our housing plans, and starting to see that, you know, we've really got things happening up there is really encouraging. Colleagues, any comments? Councillor Bolton, and then councillor Els.
Thank you, leader. I, as a local councillor for Oxford Ridge, I am overjoyed and very, very pleased we are not only building new social housing for the residents of Waverley, but also extra-new social housing, because we've managed to fit 40 units, whereas before we had 34. Thank you.
Councillor Els?
Thank you, leader. I would just like to say that on a previous committee, when I was on the audit committee, I did suggest that these houses, they were slightly different then in their presentation for planning. They had faux chimneys at either side for aesthetic reasons, and I did suggest that actually they were rather a waste of money. And I think on 40 properties, we've probably saved between £20,000 and £40,000, and I commend that, and I'm really glad that somebody was listening, and that was from audit committee. Thank you.
Councillor Els, thank you. Councillor, Mrs King, you wish to come back?
Just briefly, thank you. Yes, thank you very much indeed, councillor Els. If you went and had a look at the show homes at Oxford Ridge, you'd notice there's no chimneys.
I think that's a hint for us all to visit the show homes as soon as we have time. Any other comments? In that case, we'll move to the recommendation, and for that item, there's one recommendation. Is that agreed, colleagues?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item eight is approval to submit a planning application and commons consent for fencing on the Lammerslands, and that's councillor Dinas. Would you like to speak to the item?
Thank you. I'll try and be brief. Waverley has a higher-level stewardship agreement to manage Lammerslands. There's a need to fence the area between Chalk Road and Hell Ditch to allow grazing cattle. This will fulfil our obligations to achieve correct management of this important area. The fencing application includes kissing gates, which will provide disabled access as well to the meadow. There are two recommendations, which are detailed on page four of the agenda and pages 27 to 34 of your papers. Thank you.
Councillor Dinas, thank you. Colleagues, are there any comments you wish to make on this item? There are two recommendations. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item nine, which is a property matter, and that's the regear of the lease at Unit C, Guildford Road Trading Estate in Farnham. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. In line with our ongoing property strategy, which makes best use of our property assets, there has been a rent review of this industrial unit on Guildford Road, Farnham. Following on from that review, there have been new terms set, which I commend to the executive. Much of the detail is in exempt, and I don't see any reason why we need to move into closed session, so I'll let the papers stand on their own merit.
Colleagues, any comments? Would you like me to go into exempt, or are you content with the report before you and the recommendation? Right, in that case, there is one recommendation. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item 10, I understand, again, we have a speaker for item 10. councillor Hyman?
Thank you for waking me up, Leader. Yes, thank you. We are back at perhaps the same issue that I addressed earlier in respect of showing whether the council's policies and actions do withstand scrutiny. I noticed that on the community overview and scrutiny papers for next week's meeting, I assume it'll be the same for all ONS meetings in future, it starts off with a very nice bit about how important scrutiny is, and when I read through it, I suggest that members of the public and all members read that and ask themselves perhaps, is that what Waverley's doing, and particularly in the light of the recommendation here, which seeks quite clearly to restrict overview and scrutiny, or certainly restrict scrutiny. The recommendation is that they set up no more than two subcommittees. The role of overview and scrutiny is to challenge the executive, and if the executive is turning around and saying we are going to limit the overview and scrutiny that can be done, and we're going to limit the challenging, then it's quite clear that the council is unable to defend its position, otherwise it would quite simply allow whatever scrutiny members want to go ahead. I do appreciate that there's a nice element of this recommendation, that it is bringing, it is at least allowing something to be done without it having to come back again for permission. I do appreciate that. But you can see that what it's actually doing here in the recommendation, and correct me if I'm wrong, is limiting each of the two overview and scrutiny committees, which of course the minority groups will be chairing for the next few months anyway, is my understanding. It's limiting what can be done in terms of scrutiny, so I would ask you not to agree to that limit, and to show that this council believes that it's acting openly and honestly, and transparently, show it by not restricting scrutiny. So I would ask that you change that recommendation. Thank you very much, Leader.
councillor Hyman, I think we just need to be absolutely clear here. No one is trying to do anything untoward in terms of scrutiny, and you'll be aware, no doubt, you've been informed, that a lot of work has already gone on over the last few months, started sort of at the end of last year, by a number of the Conservative backbenchers, two of whom are actually on the executive today, looking and reviewing the whole scrutiny process at Waverley, and making sure that scrutiny really was and really is fit for purpose, given the challenges that the council faces ongoing and faces, you know, in today's world. And that was a very thorough process, which involved talking to members. Indeed, I understand that the leader of the opposition spoke to the panel at length. I know a number of us who were on the executive at the time spoke to that panel, and that panel also sought professional advice and spoke again to a number of other councils to get their views and see how they work and how they have a successful scrutiny model. So that is work that has been ongoing for a great deal of time, and the whole scrutiny process is still going through a review in terms of the structure now of the committees longer term. We've agreed, and indeed it came before council, that we will be recruiting a dedicated scrutiny officer. That's something that I have myself championed, and I know Mr Taylor, our lead on democratic services and governance, is very keen that we do as well. So absolutely, we take scrutiny very, very seriously, and what we've actually suggested here is that to actually try and save time, given the way the council process works, we actually set up, if you like, in advance and give the structure that is there for the scrutiny committees to start to feed into of two subcommittees. Now, there is nothing, as far as I'm aware, that stops those overview and scrutiny committees if they so wish, coming back to executive and council again with a request that they want further subcommittees. Am I correct, Mr Taylor? Thank you. So there's nothing to stop that. They've started by suggesting two, because I think one of the things that you may find, with all due respect, councillor Hyman, is that once you become involved in the scrutiny committees, there's an awful lot of work involved. It's very, very time-consuming, and unfortunately, you may not be able to get through things and address matters perhaps as quickly as you would wish. However, if you want to come back and apply and ask for another subcommittee or another two subcommittees to be set up, because you've got other areas that you want reviewed or you want to work on, once you've taken the chairmanship of these committees, that is your prerogative. You can come back and make that request. So this does not stop you doing anything, and it does not prevent in any way effective and robust scrutiny at Waverley. That is not what it's designed for at all. It's actually preempting the whole matter. But colleagues, would you like to speak to it, because I know councillor Els and councillor Edwards feel very passionately about scrutiny. councillor Els first.
Thank you, Leader. Well, just one thing immediately comes to me as a very clear need. I don't know how much training councillor Hyman has had in overview and scrutiny, but what interested me was his use of the word 'challenge'. He believes, I think, from what he said, that overview and scrutiny is there to challenge the executive. Now, in fact, that is not what good overview and scrutiny does. Good overview and scrutiny supports, it doesn't challenge. So I think once councillor Hyman has had some training in overview and scrutiny, which he will have to undertake, there will be a greater understanding of the process. Thank you.
councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. Just to go back to why we actually set up a working party reviewing the scrutiny process is because backbenchers felt that they weren't being listened to by the leadership at that time. Now, that's completely changed, because we had to render support from Real Good Self and the rest of the members of the executive here today. And we're setting up a new system, which will address the concerns of backbenchers, I can assure Mr Hymer about. I was one of the outspoken members of the scrutiny committee, and the officers and the members are fully behind the new process, and I suggest that Mr Hymer, if he does become chairman of one of the committees, sits on that committee, gets his training, as my colleague has suggested, and comes forward with any constructive proposals he may have in the near future, but I can assure him that this executive will listen to the overview and scrutiny committee comments. That's all I can say, Leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Hyman, I hope that does start to reassure you, because, you know, you are now part of this council, and, you know, I'm sure that you've got valuable feedback to give us as well, and I would like to think that, you know, we can move forward and, you know, we will have valuable feedback and valuable input from the scrutiny committees. As I say, we're starting with the recommendation that there are two subcommittees to take the in-depth work reviews for this council year. If you wish to come back with other applications and other, you know, you need to be very careful in terms of thinking about what is it you want to achieve, and also making sure that you're mindful of resource implications. But as long as you've done that, then, you know, I'm sure that Mr Taylor and his team will be happy to advise you. Colleagues, there's one recommendation on that item. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
We move to item 11, which is executive director's actions. Mr Wenham?
No items under this category this month, Leader.
We then move to item 12 on the agenda. However, as far as I'm aware, we've no need to exclude press and public, we've nothing to go into exempt on. Thank you. And in that case, I will be closing the meeting. Thank you all for attending.